Namaskar. Good evening and a very warm welcome to the last day of this NTSE session. Conducted by Vidyadan. Today, in fact, I am greatly honoured because we have with us some esteemed guests who are from the NTSE office, who are from, who are the block education officers. Puttaraju sir, Ravindra sir, Somnatha sir. So, I would actually require, I am really very honoured and thankful to you all for joining this session and grazing this session actually. Thank you so much, all three of you for joining and I request first Puttaraju sir to please say a few words. A few words of encouragement for the children. Puttaraju sir, am I audible?
Madam.
Alright, so, yes sir.
Do you even hear?
Yes, now you are.
Thank you, madam. You are conducting the NTSE exam preparation in last week. Grateful to you. I think it is a valuable session you are conducted in our district students as well as Thalak also. Very grateful to Indira madam, Arinini madam. I am not joining last session because in summer is there. Today, in our Ravindra and B O sir has asked me, would you please join and issue in madam, Indira madam and Arinini and also some NTSE coaching also. Because we are all conducting so many examinations because SLC or 10th class, P U class, so many. But NTSE is taken from SSLC or 10th class. Because this is the national level talented searching examination. And also you are valuable session, I saw in your session last week. The mental ability as well as psychological, psychological and talented and how to prepare NTSE, GMAT and subjective. It is a very useful to in our teachers and students also. Madam, I, in our department, is grateful to you also. Now, Vidya. In coming days, we are conducting all high schools, those who are conducting entrance reach to NTSE examination. Thank you once again in Indira madam and Arinini madam and also in our.
Okay, I think we have some bit of connectivity issue there. But thank you so much sir, Puttaraju sir, thank you really, your words are very valuable to us. Yes, sir, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam. Giving the opportunity to talk personally, I would not met you. But in our Ravindra, I say, Indira madam and Arinini madam is a very useful to the intellectual or subjective also, GMAT and another. In future days, the friends, not only NTSE in future, their future, any take competitive examination as well as another, more than CET need so many examination in their life. Okay, that's fine, once again, thank you, Indira madam and Arinini madam. Thank you, Onandhal, thank you, madam.
Thank you so much sir. In fact, it is a great platform for all of us. And yes, not just NTSE, need everything, we will be ready to grab the opportunity. We are always ready for that. Somnatha sir, I would request you to please speak a few words and bless all of us. Sir, you are on mute sir.
Somnatha sir. Nindu mute taagida. Tae bitto unmute maadi maathadina.
Okay, while we wait for Somnatha sir. The power behind this entire session, who actually made this entire session possible with Vidyadan, who coordinated everything, Ravindra sir. Actually, I kept you for the last because I know you were the main person who made the entire thing possible. You coordinated everything and this two words, thank you, will not be enough to thank you for this great opportunity for us. So, over to you.
Actually, even the session, Nidhi Dikka Karanagittakantaru, Prashanthantai, the Nima Vidyadan coordinator. How we can ask thanks to him? Again, that we meet him. The balla, the NGO, the, we will allow class to go to the, we will notice it, we will not appreciate it. But after, we will put things, we will ask thanks to our department, Puttaraju sir and B O sir, we will ask thanks to them. Again, this vision, we will do that.
Hearing human voice. Okay. Then step number two, step number two is going to be. Sit up on the bed. Step number three, now you tell me what will be step number three, Pooja.
Wake up, get to stand up.
Ah, very good, to stand up, Sreya, step four.
Man, fresh up.
Fresh up, fresh up karne ke liye to fresh up, you have to walk to some place, no? So that is the first, that will be the step four, will be turn. To right or left whichever direction is your bathroom, okay, then walk so many steps. Open the door. Okay, then after that, it has to brush the teeth. So, pick up the brush, pick up the toothbrush, then uncork the toothpaste. Put the paste on the brush, close the toothpaste, put it back. Pick up the brush, brush your teeth, in between whatever gargle your mouth and all that. Because this is a robot. This thing is not there inside the robot. Okay, so we have to give it very specific broken down logical commands. That is logical reasoning. Okay, why did we give the command open eyes? Because obviously you cannot walk around with your eyes closed unless you are sleepwalking. Right? Why did we say open the bathroom door? Otherwise you cannot enter the bathroom. Henna, that is your logical reasoning or logical breakdown. Okay, now let us come to our question. Now that this is exactly what coding and decoding is all about. Okay, it is nothing but logical reasoning. And generally encoding and decoding, as far as the mental ability test is concerned. What they test is the logic. So, you encrypt a word or a number in a particular code or pattern. Based on the set of rule, now the rule will not be explained to you. Okay, the rule is not going to be explained to you, you just have to observe. Make your own rule. Okay, now. Here is your first question. This is the first question. If brown is written as Z P M U L, Z P M U L. Then violet is coded as. These are your options, I am giving you exactly one minute. Observe this. And then we will figure out the answer. I am giving you exactly one minute because after one minute I will just stop the screen share. So you have about forty-five seconds more, I will just put myself on mute. All right, time up. I just hope you all have written down the question because later you will have to dictate it out to me. I am going to share my screen with the whiteboard. Okay, uh. You have written down the question, just give me a thumbs up or thumbs down. Yes, no, okay, when I ask you at that time, just tell me. All right, I hope my screen is visible, well, let me make it full screen. Please give me a minute. Ayurama, just give me one minute. Okay, fine. What was the question, it was brown is. Z P M U L, correct? Then what is violet? Did any of you? Come across the answer, could you decode the answer?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, what is it?
First option. T G M J C R.
T G. Uh, T G M J C R, right? Okay, what was the logic behind that?
Ma'am, it was uh two letters previous, it was taken two letters previous, that is. B, it will come J A Z, that is A is in between them.
Hmm, okay.
P Q R.
Okay, fine, so now we will just work it out, okay? Now the answer, I will, I won't tell you the answer, let's work out the answer. Now how do you do it is very simple. All of you unmute yourselves and say from A B C D.
A B C D E F G H I J K L M N O P Q R S T U V.
Ah, wait one minute, I am still not tell. M, then?
Y N O P P Q R.
Everybody in chorus is.
T U V W X Y Z.
Okay, fine, now let us put arrow marks, okay, I will just change the color. So A N, all right. And, sorry. B is. One minute, one minute, I think, yeah. So here it will be, every letter is given one one code. Okay, so just as uh I think who was saying it, Sreya, right? Where are you? Ha, you are here, okay. The letters are one one letter coded. Okay, that is the reason why we have it as T G. And sorry, not G, it was. T G M J C and R. Okay, so now A is the first letter whereas Z is, Z is the last letter. Second letter is B, okay, but B is given the code as Z. So there you keep going one one letter back, from back to first. Okay, then you will derive at the code. Now nobody is going to tell you.
Can I cut in that on second?
Pardon, pardon?
I am can I explain it once again?
Once again, yes, sure, now see B R O W N, correct? Now if you look at R, it is given the code, the letter R is given the code as P. Correct? Now the letter R is given the code as P, now if you think P Q R. Right, P and R, so here R is replaced with P. All right, same way, now O is given the code as M, if you can see. Okay, so L M N O. So between O and M, the one letter was N, now M is replaced as O. So now when you come back, when you apply the same thing in violet, V I O. Okay, so O we have already got the letter, it is M, so dash dash M. With that you automatically eliminate option number four. Okay, because third letter has to be M, so you have only the first three options. The fourth option is out of question because fourth option has W as the letter. Tike, Yogesh, still here, did you understand? Okay. I am sorry, I muted myself by mistake. Now the next letter is, uh sorry, V I O. L E T, from that M, we have already finalized, the code for O is M. Okay, now it is V. P Q R S T U V. Okay, T U V, so you keep taking a triad, three-three. So instead of V, they have taken T as the letter. Okay, in between is U, they left out U, now they have taken T as the letter. So now we have two codes. T dash M dash dash dash. All right, now you just look at your, now the two codes are worked out, now you just look at your options. Which option has the first letter as T and the third letter as M? Which is the option having first letter as T and third letter as M?
One and three.
Yes, one and three, now you eliminated two options. You eliminated fourth option first and then you eliminated second option. Now only one and three is remaining, now let us go further, till here, all of you understood? Yes, okay, fine, now let us go forward. Okay, now which letter after T is V? Okay, G H I, so what will be the code of I? What will be the code of I? Yes, it will be G, again we have two options, option one and option three. Henna, now Dundobi, you tell me what will be the code for L?
M.
J, why do you think J?
Ma'am, it has uh between the alphabets. Ma'am.
J K L. Okay, so J K L means you eliminate K, you get J. So now we got T G M J. All right, now E. E is C. All right, now we are not going to waste time working on that. Because already both the options have C as the next letter, so fine, they are already saying it. Now the last one is what, it is T. Okay, T if you look at it. P Q R S T. Q R S T. So you take out S, you throw out S, then one option will be there, that is. T is in place of, or rather, R is in place of T. Okay, so which is your option, Pooja?
First one.
First one, okay. You just have to observe and break the codes. Okay, Yogesh, now did you understand, is it okay Yogesh?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I have understood.
Okay, thank you so much, now I will give you one more question, okay? One minute, where is my presentation now, too many windows are open now, it becomes confusing. So the next question is this. And this I am giving you only forty-five seconds, five seconds are already over. I am muting myself. Ten more seconds. Time up, I hope all of you copied the question. Okay.
Ma'am, option one.
Option one.
All of you, option one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, could be, how is it option one, can anybody explain? Yes, Pooja, go ahead.
Ma'am, in place of heart in chair as well as in the word rent, in place of heart it is replaced by five, the number five. And in place of E, it is replaced by number six, then K by three, in the same way when the word take red. Six, five, six, three, five.
Very good, okay, now I will just, I hope you all have copied the question because one of you will have to. Dictate it out to me, I will just solve this whole thing so that you know those who are watching us on YouTube live. They understand it, now the words were, chair is coded as. One, two, three, four, five, Henna?
Yes, ma'am.
And then it was rent, Henna?
Yes, ma'am.
What was the code for rent?
Five, six, seven, eight.
Five, six, seven, eight, okay. And now we have to work out the code for R E A R, this was the thing, no?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so. We first look at. The letters, here we first look at what are the letters that are there in both the words. Okay, so R and A is common in both these, between rare and chat, so we circle that. And then we have E. Okay, so now just put the numbers below it, R is five, E is six. A is three and again five, so five, six, three, five, option one is the answer. Tike. This was okay, very easy, no? Coding and decoding, imagine using these chords and decodes. All the spies used to communicate with each other during the world war. Okay. And a, a very interesting story, I won't take much long, okay? Um, and then, you all know the attack on Pearl Harbor? There was a US base, okay? Okay, the naval port, there was a naval port called Pearl Harbor in America. Now during the second world war, America first said, no, no, we are not going to participate. We are only going to watch you fight, okay? America said, no, no, we don't want to fight, we are not going to participate in your world war, whatever is there, you all fight and you all have a war. Okay. But America is a very big power, okay? So Japan was very scared. Japan said right now America is not participating, but if they participate at any time later. They will be like really very powerful and they will bring a lot of destruction. Okay, so what did Japan do? Japan, they attacked this um strong, it was a naval, strong naval base of America. Called Pearl Harbor, they went and they attacked Pearl Harbor and they destroyed it completely. Okay, now just ten minutes before Pearl Harbor, not even ten minutes, I think very few minutes. Before Pearl Harbor was attacked, that is when the. Uh, US Army, the Navy people, the US Army. They could actually decode that entire message saying attack Pearl Harbor. Okay, using torque machines, now torque machines are something like submarines. From underwater you just leave it, it will go in force and attack the ship. Okay, so these coding decoding messages were used in those times during the world war. Even now it is used. Okay, even now it is used uh for communication between the military bases and all. All right, but this coding and decoding, it only makes use of a very simple principle, that is logical reasoning. All right, okay, so on that note, uh now. This is, this was all about coding and decoding with some people had asked for some clarity. I hope it is clear. Now let us move forward and let's once again just brush through the pattern of questions. Now the duration of all the tests, the NTSE test, whether it be stage one or stage two. It is two hours of mental ability and two hours of scholastic aptitude. Okay, so the mental ability test is conducted in the morning. And uh scholastic aptitude is conducted in the afternoon, there are hundred questions. So uh mental ability has hundred questions for hundred marks, that is one mark per question. And you have to ask, one twenty hours. So in fact, when you try to work out the answers, just a while back, the way I showed you eliminating each and every option. The same way you do for the uh for all the tests, when you eliminate the option, you save a lot of time. All right, and the scholastic aptitude is again for two hours, you have twenty marks for math. Forty mark for science and forty mark for social science, okay? Now, these were some of the uh frequently asked questions, whether there are any fees involved. The stage two NTSE paper has no fees involved. Okay, stage one NTSE paper, there may or there may not be fees. Generally there is no, uh there may or there may not be fees. That is completely up to the discretion of the state who is conducting the particular test. Now is there a negative marking, no, there are no negative markings. So in case you try to work out the option, you are simply not able to understand the question, the question is too complicated. You can do akkad akkad bombego or do inky pinky ponky. All right, that is the last option, but don't keep doing it always. Can grade nine and grade twelve undertake the exam? No, it is exclusively for grade ten, children who are in grade ten. They are the ones who undertake the NTSE exam. Then, this was a very good question that was asked, a candidate who is reappearing for the tenth standard board. Can they appear for NTSE? Very sorry to say for now, the candidates who are reappearing, they cannot appear for NTSE, NTSE is only for the first attempt freshers. Can students from other countries take the NTSE exam? Now NTSE is for students belonging to Indian nationality. All right, that is. If you are an Indian, whether you are in India or you are somewhere outside India, still you can undertake NTSE exam. Even outside India, you all can undertake NTSE exam, but then directly that is stage two. You will not go through the stage one. Okay, uh students studying in UAE or in Oman or Qatar. They can take up NTSE, but they will directly go to stage two of NTSE, they will not do the stage one of NTSE. Okay, but foreign, students of foreign nationalities studying in India. Like we have Koreans, we have African students, very sorry to say. They cannot undertake NTSE, it is exclusively for students of Indian nationality. That is you should be a citizen of India. All right, so those were some of the uh frequently asked questions about NTSE. And with that, we actually come towards the end of this particular session, but before we leave. I want to ask one question. Okay, this does not have any options, okay? This is a physics question and I found this very interesting. Now. Uh. The R is equal to thirty-six thousand kilometer. R is equal to thirty-six thousand kilometer. Then VE, which is the escape velocity. It is eleven point two kilometer. The escape velocity is eleven point two kilometer. T, time T is twenty-four hours. Okay, time T is twenty-four hours. Now this data is related to. This data is related to. Your options are, A, a rocket. B, a geo stationary satellite. C, artificial satellite, or D, Chandrayaan. Which of these do you think is the answer? Okay.
I am telling it last option.
Yeah, the options are, A, a rocket. B, geo stationary satellite. C, artificial satellite, D, Chandrayaan. Which of these do you think is the answer?
Ma'am, is it Chandrayaan?
Is it Chandrayaan, you are asking me, yeah, ma? Try to think. Why do you say it is Chandrayaan?
Ma'am, I had heard somewhere that R equals three thirty-six thousand.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
Ma'am, repeat the given once again.
The given is R is equal to thirty-six thousand kilometer. Escape velocity is eleven point two kilometer per second. T is twenty-four hours, your biggest clue lies in the time period.
Ma'am, geo stationary satellite.
Ah, no, ah. That is the biggest clue, okay, it is a geo stationary satellite. All right, now the beauty of geo stationary satellite is. It has a time period of twenty-four hours. Okay, T is always equal to twenty-four because it orbits along with the earth. That's why it is also another name for geo stationary satellites, they are also called as parking satellites. Okay, and they revolve around the earth in equatorial orbit. Okay, and they revolve around the earth in equatorial orbit. All right, can you name any two geostationary satellite in India? Anybody? INSAT, I N S A T, INSAT 2B and 2C. They all are geostationary satellites, okay? And what is PSLV? PSLV are polar satellites. All the PSLV series, they all are polar satellites. All right, that is they revolve in the polar orbit. Now apna geostationary satellite revolves around the equatorial orbit, okay? Whereas polar satellite revolves in the polar orbit, that is in the north and south pole. Okay, in the polar orbit is where they orbit around and they are the ones that are used for weather forecasting. Okay, polar satellites, they revolve in the polar orbit and they are the ones that are used for polar, uh, what polar, I am saying, weather forecasting, I was going to say polar forecasting, okay? So they are the ones used for polar, uh, I, weather forecasting, I don't know what is with this polar. So remember these two things, okay? All right, okay, so with that we come towards the wind-up of the session. We will be releasing notification on the mock test that is going to be held. Most probably on the next Sunday, within two days we will release notifications on that. Please give me one minute. My house has got some mischievous children. I am sorry for the background noise. Okay, uh, and yeah, where was I? What was it? I was talking about the mock test, yeah. And starting from Monday, we will be having ten standard revision sessions, okay? And all of you, I know some of you are in ninth, whatever doubts you have, please don't hesitate to email us. In case you would like a specific video to be released on a particular topic, please tell us, we would be more than happy to do that. Okay, please do let us know. You can email us on vidyadanindia@gmail.com. All right, okay. Okay, fine. So since we have come towards the end of the session, now we will wind up the session and I think we can stop the YouTube Live.